Good afternoon and welcome to our council meeting for November twenty-two. Now call this meeting to order. And before we get started in our regular agenda, I just want to give deepest condolences to Albert Hannah's family. Albert passed away on Friday. And Albert has been a hardened volunteer in our community on many committees and of course, very involved in the historical village for a number of years. So our thoughts and prayers go out to his family, get this difficult time for them. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor Barkley, under six point three, if you could add arena condenser, please.
Okay, thank you. Could I please have someone make a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll approve that, Mayor Barkley.
Thank you, Councilor Maseris, all in favor. Thank you. And if everyone's had time to read over the regular council meeting minutes from November the eighth, could I please have somebody approve those?
I assume move, Mayor Barkley.
Thank you, Councilor Harrison, all in favor. Thank you, and someone to please approve the agenda and priorities committee meeting minutes of November fifteenth.
Mayor Barkley, I assume move.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Dunham, all in favor. Thank you. Okay, we will move to four point one and the chief administrative officer report.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. As you tell, there's not a written report within your agenda package, but I'd like to give you a verbal, quick verbal update. The focus area of the CIO over the last couple of weeks included budget preparation, working with SLT senior leadership team in the preparation of the budget to occur, obviously, this Wednesday morning, starting. We're also in that period of time to complete the newly implemented performance evaluation. Performance evaluations within our new system. But also staff are busy also with the health and safety audit process that was initiated last week. It'll run through the rest of this week as well. Report coming probably several weeks later. And the results of that safety audit will be presented to council for an understanding of what, how we're doing with our safety program. And then, of course, as with you, council at the AMA convention in Edmonton last week. So really general report, but certainly be happy to answer any of your questions operationally or administratively that you have any questions with or for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions for CEO Becker? No? Okay, can I please have someone accept his report for information then, please?
I'll move that we accepted for information.
Thank you, Councilor Bates, all in favor. Thank you. And four point two, we will have an ECC emergency coordination center for verbal update, please.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Through staff, we continue to have really good relations with our users at the pool. In the arena, we do have a struggle being continued on at the arena. We're having difficulty achieving compliance as what's requested of the men's league that was issued a week and a half ago through my penmanship. So I'll be meeting with staff tomorrow and through the rest of the week on the next steps, but there is a likelihood of enhancing our enforcement or our screening of the users of that, of that program. So just want to bring that to your attention.
Okay, thank you. Could I please have someone make a motion to accept the ECC report as information?
Mayor Barkley, I assume move.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Dunham, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. And then item four point three, the action control. Just take a moment to look at that. And if you have any questions. Pretty straightforward. And if there's no questions, I'll have someone make a motion to approve that for information, please.
Mayor Barkley, I would make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Wing, all in favor. Okay, so five point one, we will be going through the Ipsos survey results, please.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. So back earlier this year, council did approve for administration to, in combination with Ipsos, to conduct a citizens perspective survey. So we worked with Ipsos to create a questionnaire and then they went out and contacted Inisfell residents to ask these questions. A telephone survey was conducted among a representative sample of residents aged eighteen plus between August thirteenth and August twenty-ninth of this year. And originally, it was hoped that we would get about three hundred people residents answering this questionnaire, but only two hundred and fifty-three were completed by the end of the term of August twenty-ninth. Each interview did last about twenty-four minutes long. That was the average, so quite a bit longer than the anticipated fifteen minutes. She joked that the Inisfellians really like to talk, so. So, so that was good. And the survey was conducted using random digit dialing with both landline and cellphone numbers, so. So we'll just go through the results of the survey. So a few of the key themes that they asked for of the municipal agenda issue agenda, now this was kind of an open-ended question. People could say whatever they wanted. And then Ipsos combined like like-minded answers together, right? So the first thing that that they asked that people says the issue is the economy. Nineteen percent of the people who responded said the economy was the top concern that they had. Crime, safety and policing was fifteen percent. Roads and infrastructure was thirteen percent. Ineffective government leadership was ten percent. Recreation sports facilities were nine percent. And then it goes on down to healthcare at seven percent, population growth at five percent. Here, if you just want to keep going down a bit. Go on, right there. Senior services was five percent, taxes four percent, youth activities four percent, green space three percent, utility costs. And then the other option was they don't know or didn't, didn't answer. So we'll keep going to the quality of life. So forty-four percent said very good and fifty-two percent said good. So that's ninety-seven percent. And what Ipsos does is they do compare it to norms. So across municipalities that they've done these similar surveys with across Western Canada. And the norm was ninety-five percent, so we are above the norms on, on that side, so. Pretty good. Now, on that, the perceived change in the quality of life in Inisfell over the past three years, twenty-one percent has said that it's improved. Fifty-four percent said it stayed the same and twenty-two percent said it's worsened. So again, they improved, were above the norms on the improved and stayed the same and below the norm for the worsened, which is good. So then they asked a few questions about Inisfell's quality of life. So the first one was Inisfell is a great place to make a life. And they can either strongly agree, somewhat agree, somewhat disagree, strongly disagree. I don't know, so ninety-six percent agreed with that statement, which is really amazing. The next question was, I'm proud to be a resident of Inisfell. We had ninety-three percent. The town of Inisfell fosters a town that is inclusive and accepting of all. Eighty-two percent of people agreed with that. Inisfell is moving in the right direction to ensure a high quality of life for future generations, seventy-four percent. Inisfell is a great place to make a living, it's sixty-eight percent. And I am regularly involved in neighborhood and local community events is down to at sixty-two percent. Safety of Inisfell was the next question. So the question was, how safe or unsafe do you think the town of Inisfell is overall? So eighty-four percent do think that we're safe. And the norms of ninety-three is where we're a little bit lacking in that area. And not safe is obviously fifteen percent and didn't know was one percent, so. And then, but the perceived change in crime in Inisfell over the past three years, forty-five percent of the people say the crime has increased and forty-three says it stayed the same. So we also asked this question as well. What was the desired population shift in Inisfell? So eighty percent of people said they did want to see Inisfell grow. But of that sixty-nine percent, they wanted it to grow slowly at a, at a constant rate. So then we went into the important satisfaction and investment of town services. So the first question, how satisfied are you with the overall level and quality of services and programs provided by the town of Inisfell? So eighty-three percent say they're satisfied with twenty-four percent being very satisfied and fifty-nine percent being somewhat satisfied. A little bit low than the ninety percent norms, so that's. So now, they went through and read a list of services to all the residents that took the survey and they had to rate each one of them. And fire services ranked at a hundred percent of either very important or somewhat important as well as snow removal. Police services from the RCMP is ninety-nine percent. Parks, playgrounds, open spaces, ninety-nine percent. Roads, pottle repairs, ninety-nine percent. Garbage and wastewater services, sorry, water and wastewater services. Garbage and recycling, sidewalk trails and pathways, we're all at ninety-eight percent. Recreation programs, economic development was at ninety-six percent. As well as municipal bylaws and enforcement. Recreation facilities was at ninety-five percent. Access to social support services, ninety-four percent. Town growth management, ninety-four percent. Town communications, ninety-three percent. And then it goes down from their town website is at seventy-eight percent, so. And then satisfaction, I think this is very similar to the first one, the ones that they find very important, they're still quite satisfied. So fire services, ninety-nine percent. Garbage and recycling, ninety-three percent. Parks, playgrounds and open spaces, ninety-one percent. And so on. And that goes over until to the next two pages. So. So then we went through and asked, do you think the town should invent, invest more or less or the same amount on this program or service? So economic development was kind of the highest things on people's mind. At fifty-six percent said that we should be investing more money on economic development. Fifty-five percent for police services for, for the RCMP was also quite high on people's minds. Recreation facilities, recreation programs, access to social support services were all very high. Sidewalk trails and pathways, roads, including pottle repairs in the thirties, town communications, snow removal. So just shows where people think, where the residents think we should be investing our capital in. So then we asked them some questions about taxation. So your property tax, tax dollars are divided between the town and the province. Considering the services provided by the town, please rate the value you feel you receive from your municipal property tax dollars. And eighty-five percent of the public survey says that they get a good value from their taxes, which is quite a bit higher than the eighty-one percent of the norm. So the next question was regarding balancing taxation and service level, service delivery levels. So municipal property taxes are the primary way to pay for services and programs provided by the town of Inisfell. Due to the increased cost of maintaining current service levels and infrastructure, the town must balance taxation and service delivery levels to deal with this situation. Which are the following four options? So these were questions, they were given these options. So eight percent said increase taxes beyond current inflation rate to expand services. But fifty-five percent did say increase taxes at current inflation rate to maintain services at current levels. So that's an overall acceptance of sixty-three percent of the public to increase, to increase taxes compared to the fifty-two percent norm, that's quite a bit higher. And thirty percent of the public would like us to cut service levels in some way in order to maintain taxes or to lower taxes. So the next set of questions, we talked about communication with the town. So only the people that said yes answered the following questions. And it was, had they contacted the town in, in the last twelve months? So how satisfied were they with the level of service that they received from us? So fifty-two percent was very satisfied, twenty-eight percent somewhat satisfied. So we're sitting at eighty percent, the norm's eighty-three percent, so. Likely have some room to, to increase on that. And then one of the questions we asked was how they got that information from the town? So they could answer multiple times on this. As you can see, forty-eight percent people either visited a town office or facility and forty-eight percent called into the town. So pretty high, they want to, they want to speak to a person or see a person in. So then they went through some attitudes regarding town service delivery. The town staffer courteous, helpful and knowledgeable, ninety-three percent agree to that. The quality of service from the town is consistently high, eighty-six agree with that. The town of Inisfell meets my customer service expectations. The town responds quickly to requests and concerns, they were both at eighty-five percent. The town of Inisfell practices open and accessible government, seventy-eight percent. And the town allows citizens to have meaningful input in decision-making, seventy-one percent. So then, what's the primary source of their information? And right now, it looks like the newspaper is still that primary source where people are getting their information from at thirty-eight percent. Social media is starting to creep up there, but still not yet. Satisfaction with town information and communications, eighty-three percent do say that they were satisfied with the quality of the information and communications, so that's good. Compared to the seventy-seven percent norm, we're higher there. And we talked about trust. Fifty-five percent of the public say they trust the town of Inisfell. While twenty-eight percent is neutral. So overall satisfaction with the Inisfell's council and administration. So the town of Inisfell, including council and administration, was seventy-three percent satisfied. Town administration excluding town council was eighty-two percent satisfied. And town council excluding town administration was sixty-eight percent satisfied. Then they went into the demographics and they pulled this demographics based on the last census done by Statistics Canada. So it was polled as of twenty sixteen numbers, but it does show the gender, so on average, we're forty to fifty-two percent male to female. Our age, I did question them that the younger age is only ten percent, but that is truly what our demographics are. Ten percent of eighteen to thirty-four year olds, forty-four percent of thirty-four to thirty-five to fifty-four, sorry. And forty-four percent is fifty-five plus. Seventy-five percent of the households in town do not have children. And it just goes on from there. If you have any questions, please go ahead. Otherwise, I'd just like a motion to accept it as information.
Okay, thank you, Director Victor. Does anyone have any questions? Councilor Wing?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Given that this work was undertaken prior to the election, I just have a question and that's more around, why did we engage with this type of activity? And how did we anticipate using the data that we collected? So what, what, why did we do it and what are we going to do now?
We felt that it would, was a good time to engage the public just to see kind of a baseline of where everyone's opinions were at about the services and programs that we provide to the residents of Inisfell. I mean, this is something that we would like to continue doing about every two years to kind of see, kind of like a grade, kind of a to see how we're, how we're doing and give us some key points where we can, we can get better and, and we can strive to do better on, on some of the things that maybe we were a bit low on.
If I could add, Mayor Barkley, it also can help council understand what the community is telling you in this framework. You've already done your, a lot of engagement through your campaign process. So you're, you're allowed from the community. There's other mechanisms as well for that engagement. This one also gives you some direct feedback on, you know, focus areas. So one comes to mind is economic developments, we're seeing that. Community safety, perhaps. We're also, we can use it internally administratively, perhaps customer service is a focus area of twenty-twenty-two to heighten some, some areas in that. But it certainly is a tool for strategic planning as you move into the budgetary process. Also is a good report card of some sort to, to council. Could be the one that are leaving their term, but also through halfway through. You can also do a little benchmarking on, on what the community is telling you overall within the full organization as, as a town, as a corporation, corporation.
Councilor Heistad?
Yeah, I think CEO Becker took all my words. But no, I actually really liked it. I was here when, when the presentation had taken place just before the election. And I said, he is a really good base for us to understand where we go strategically and where our citizens want us to spend their dollars. So thanks so much to our administration.
And Director Vicar, so I'm wondering if we could have maybe had budget this week? I don't know if we need the whole report, but I think some of those graphs or bar charts are really important for us to keep in mind and, you know, to see where people want money invested and to see what's really important to the community and, and, you know, ensure that's matching up to decisions that, that were being made. And if that, I don't know, might be like four pages out of there, maybe four or five pages that you think are, are pertinent to, to what we will be doing.
Absolutely, Mayor Barkley, I can provide that information.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'll just ask somebody to make a motion to accept this as information, please.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Heistad.
That council approves the twenty-twenty-one citizen perspective survey resulted or present, as presented.
Thank you, all in favor. Okay, we will go to six point one next. I'm going to ask Mr. Shaw to come up. Mr. Shaw is a manager of community development services and he will be speaking to the sale of a closed right-of-way.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. So this is a process that began with the previous council. You're at the tail end of completing the paperwork necessary to complete this. So back in September, the previous council had second and third readings of a bylaw to close the road right of way. On the diagram on the right-hand side of the page, you have a few properties there. And in that, you'll see a green, kind of like triangle, hockey stick type of formation there. That's the road right of way that is under consideration right now. There are no municipal services within the right of way. So what we're doing this afternoon is we're asking council's permission to enter into two agreements. The first is a land purchase agreement between ourselves and the adjacent landowner. The closed right of way will then be consolidated with their parcel as a condition of the transfer. And that's attachment one that you have to your report. The second document deals with a land acquisition agreement between ourselves and the adjacent landowner. This will allow us to be able to extend Forty-Eighth Avenue further north. And that shown in attachment free to the report from the, the north from the, the north sector area structure plan. So what we're asking today is that council would give your permission for administration to be able to enter into these agreements through two resolutions. The first one dealing with the land purchase agreement and the second one dealing with the land acquisition agreement. If council has any questions, be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you very much. Could I have somebody make that motion? And then if there's any questions, we can go there, Councilor Bates?
Sure, I'll move the requested and recommended action.
The first motion?
The first motion, which is, I can read it. The council authorizes administration to enter into a land purchase agreement with number company Alberta for the transfer portion of land within parcel legally described as Plan zero-nine-two-two-six-two-three.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about this?
Mayor Barkley, for new council, it may appear complex. So if you want to dive down into that procedural process, how we got there, please, this is a great opportunity to learn, understand how this process works. So don't, don't be shy on just asking to explain.
But why don't you do that, CEO Becker? And or Gordon, or Gordon, sorry, whoever. Yeah, why don't you, you do that so that new council could be brought up to speed? And because it, it was fairly lengthy and.
So mayor and council, through time to time, administration may identify properties that we deem to be surplus to our needs. In this particular case, you had a undeveloped road allowance that extended through properties that you see in the, the diagram there. So we have to go through a process that we develop a bylaw to be able to close the, the road allowance. That bylaw has to be approved by council through first, second and third readings. Before the second and third reading, it would go to the ministry for their approval to make sure that we're not screwing up in any, anyway. And then once we have that approval back from, from them, we can then bring it forward for the second and third reading. So it's a process that is advertised. People are notified so that if there are any concerns about the closure, then administration and through administration council can be aware of those particular concerns. So we've gone through that process previously with the, the other council. Now, what you have before you is just tying off the loose ends so that we can execute the documentation on the town's behalf. So that in a nutshell is, is the process that we've gone through in this particular matter.
Okay, thank you very much. And it was also done for the purpose of this business wanted to expand. So there was a residential property next door, a house on it. And, and that was sold to, to this business. And then they wanted to expand onto the property. So we had to go through, through this to accommodate everything's. Anything else you wanted to add or no? Okay, okay. So if everybody, we've heard Councilor Bates's motion, all in favor, if there's no more questions. Okay, Carrie, thank you. And then could I please have someone make the second motion?
Mayor Barkley, I move that council authorizes administration to enter into a land acquisition agreement with one-zero-five-two-seven-three-one Alberta Limited for the future acquisition of a land for a public road right-of-way within lot twelve, block two, Plan zero-nine-two-two-six-two-three at such time as the town requires it.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor? Okay, Carrie, thank you. So moving on to six point two. Mr. Shaw will give us a presentation on safety codes service provider.
Mayor and council administration has been transitioning to bringing building service inspections inside. Previously, we had a, a contract provider to provide those services. And so the report that you have before you is part and parcel of that transition. So we administer the Safety Codes Act through the, the building, electrical, fire, gas and plumbing. So we're responsible for the administration of that delivery through our quality management plan. So municipalities will typically have service providers provide these kinds of services. Mostly the large ones will have in-house expertise, but a lot of the small ones. Mostly the large ones will have in-house expertise, but a lot of the small ones rely upon service providers. Uh, to date, that's kind of what we have been doing. Uh, but we have felt that it's probably better trying to bring building services inside so that we have better coordination with fire services and with development services. Uh, so back in May, administration had presented a report to council seeking that internalization of the, the building services, uh, which was approved by council. And in between that time and now, uh, we have hired a person to look after our building services. And we're now in the process so that come January first, we'll be able to have a hundred percent. Responsibility for those services in-house. But that still leaves us with the plumbing, gas, fire or plumbing gas and, and, um, electrical, uh, permits. So, uh, we had previously gone out and sought, um, companies who would be interested in providing those services. The administration did receive a few, um, proposals from those service providers. We contacted two of the service providers to see if they would be interested in providing us with the electrical plumbing and gas, uh, services. Uh, so there were two, as I said, who were interested in doing so. Uh, so if you look at the report tables, one, two, and three, kind of give you an idea in terms of the number of permits that we have within these disciplines. And so the two companies that I, I had indicated, you had IJD Inspections Limited and Superior Safety Codes Incorporated, uh, both other red deer. Uh, both very qualified to provide the services that, that we needed to have. Uh, but when we looked at what their split was for, um, their take and ours, we found that, uh, Superior provided us with a better split sixty forty versus seventy thirty. Uh, so when we looked at the kind of average that we had over the last three years for these permits, we found basically that under Superior Safety Codes, we would likely be receiving more revenue versus IGD. And so administration is recommending to you today, uh, for consideration of Superior Code, um, for inclusion as our service provider. And the agreement would be basically for a three-year term with an option for two one-year extensions. Uh, our feeling is that, um, Superior will provide us with a, a better service compared to, to IJT. Uh, we feel also in terms of their, their hourly rate that they charge you for doing inspections is thirty dollars less than IJD. So for these particular reasons, we felt that they were, um, better, uh, from our perspective to be able to enter into an agreement with them. So that's the motion that you have before you this afternoon.
Okay, thank you very much. Is somebody willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor Barkley.
Thank you. Can I have you read it, please?
Sorry. I make the motion that council authorizes administration to enter into a service-related agreement with Superior Safety Codes, Inc. For the delivery of plumbing, gas and electrical inspection services on behalf of the town effective January first, twenty twenty-two for a three-year term with option for two one-year extensions.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Are there any discussions around this motion, Counselor Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Just went through to, will there be any issues or concerns with the transition from JD over to Superior come January first, any?
Mayor and council, we are working on a communications program to be able to ensure that transition is going to be as smooth as possible. And our building inspector has kind of already reached out to a, a number of different, uh, companies to ensure that the transition is going to be as smooth as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bates.
Yes, um, the question I have is the charge per hour, is that, is that a cha- a charge that goes through to the, to the person that's applying to have, to have that project completed or is that something we pay and then there's another transition? Who, who gets that charge?
Uh, mayor and council, it may actually depend upon who's requesting the inspection. It may very well be the, the applicant who has to pay it. Sometimes we have to request inspections and we would end up paying that, that fee. So it very much depends upon, uh, who's making the request. And that's why we wanted to try to ensure that, uh, from a service delivery and a customer delivery standpoint, uh, we would be able to get the best value, uh, from the company involved. So that's why we were selecting Superior.
Okay, well, thank you very much. So either way, I guess, whether it's us or the applicant, it's still more reasonable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so we have a motion in place. So all in favor? Okay, Carrie, thank you. Thank you very much. So six point three, I have Director Jenkins speak to the arena issue.
But thank you. Um, so we are looking to request a motion, uh, from council to direct administration to proceed with the replacement of the arena condenser as an emergent expenditure to be funded by the twenty twenty-two capital budget. So this condenser was last replaced in twenty fourteen. However, we have had a leak, uh, that has developed resulting in the need for immediate repair that will take place as soon as we can coordinate that. The leak has been, it's been a couple of weeks, so we've been having to recharge the system far more frequently than we normally would. So we're hoping in the coming weeks that we will be able to get, um, the leak patched. However, and get it patched without any more significant downtime in the arena. Despite the repair, however, the recommendation from our service provider is to replace the unit, uh, to ensure consistent service. That said, with supply issues and changing costs that are always sort of the norm now, uh, we would like to order the unit, um, as soon as possible. We currently have a quote, uh, from Star Tech Service who we utilize for most of our arena activity, uh, for a cost of a hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred, uh, with that quote being valid until December ninth. We do anticipate that that cost would go up if we wait until the new year, uh, to place the order. As well, Star Tech has estimated a delivery of a minimum of twenty weeks before the unit would be here. So even giving them some contingency, if it doesn't make it here in twenty weeks, we want to make sure we have that unit, uh, here and installed prior to the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, uh, ice season. So we are, that's why we're here three days before budget to ask for consideration of this, um, of this expenditure.
Okay, thank you, Director Jenkins. Um, could I have somebody to make a motion then that we direct administration to replace the arena condenser at a cost of a hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars from Stan Tech Services? Star Tech, sorry. Do I say Stan Tech? Star Tech?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Highstead. Any questions about this? Counselor Bates.
I do a blend. Um, I'm trying to remember what it was we replaced about five years ago that failed. We had a temporary trailer mounted unit in.
I'm not sure. This was replaced twenty fourteen, possibly twenty thirteen.
Okay, and there's no, nobody's second guessing that it needs to be replaced. So that, I'm certainly not going to second guess it. Thank you.
Director Jenkins, is there any, um, I guess, concern that having to wait five months or waiting for a repair, like, could it impact operations at the arena in the meantime?
We hope not. Okay. Um, we'll be getting this, the repair done, um, as quickly as we can. And hopefully it is sufficient to get us, us through the balance of the ice season. But yes, if you've been at the arena, you will notice there's a sort of a construction fence set up around the back, around the condenser unit. Um, just as a precautionary measure, because there is the, the leak from the, the condenser. So, um, and yes, we've been having starts in there far more frequently than we're accustomed to, to, to refill the system because it's.
Do they do the repair too?
They will, yeah.
Okay. Director, Director, Counselor Maseris.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley, to Director Jenkins. I'm just wondering what the typical lifespan is on, um, a unit like that.
So I'm told fifteen to twenty years. They only come with a one-year warranty, but, um, yeah, that's.
And is the original one a Star Tech unit?
Um, I was actually, let me check if Tricia's text me. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Harrison.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Barkley. Just, uh, a question around what's leaking from an environmental point of view.
Um, so it is, there is an ammonia component to the leak, um, out of the system. Uh, we do have, that's part of why the, the fences have been set up. Uh, Star Tech has also, um, made a report to Alberta Environment. I don't believe it is actually reportable at the amount it is right now, but they have, uh, made that contact, um, as well. Gary's been made aware if, if there is, um, a call that someone can smell it. We haven't had any, any issues with that to date. Um, and within the facility, we have all of the, the detection equipment for, for ammonia as well.
Thank you.
So one question I, I have, I guess, Director Jenkins or CEO Becker, but because of the cost of this, we don't need to worry about going out to tender or is it just so few companies that do this kind of thing?
Um, Mayor Barkley, answer your question, consider an emergent purchase. Yeah, we, we have an understanding of the market. We do not seek, um, um, the quotes as per their procurement policy. But, uh, I'm recommending exercising the policy in the form of emergent purchasing.
Yeah, fair enough. For sure. It sounds like it needs to be fixed now. Uh, so we have a motion on the table. Any more discussion? No, all in favor? Kate carried. Good luck. And we'll move on to seven point one correspondence. Just take a quick look through that. I was going to mention, um, Cara, a couple of those links on the, that police letter from Justice, they, they don't go anywhere. That's okay.
Mayor Barkley, we can send you the original, uh, within an email. So you can see the full content of this correspondence item.
Yeah, I think when I clicked on it, the final report, the link didn't work and the future state report didn't as well.
So without Mayor Barkley, just, uh, maybe kind of highlight some of these correspondence items, uh, I'll just kind of maybe walk through, if you don't mind, there's some reference to the Alberta, but, and the, um, budsman, uh, that came in, uh, several years back, municipal affairs is getting inundated with, uh, with inquiries, complaints from, from respective municipal citizens. Um, this was put into place, uh, to, to provide, um, independence, um, investigation, uh, to ensure it's fair treatment through, uh, uh, independent of government. So, um, citizens, um, have a right to indicate or contact the ombudsman, um, uh, with concerns and ensures compliance with legislation policies, et cetera. So it helps municipal affairs take the load off, but also ensures that, uh, um, citizens, um, inquiries are being, being heard as well as investigated appropriately. Um, also the, as you indicated, Mayor Barkley, about the, the provincial police service transition, transition study was completed and will afford you the, this respective correspondence item. But certainly take a look at those respective dates for engagements. Um, they recommend try to get to the ones that are closest to you. And there is a morning, afternoon session. It is a Monday, um, in red deer. Think further on into February, early February, I believe. So certainly would guide you to participate with that opportunity. Also, I'd like to, uh, point you to, I think it's the very last correspondence item regarding, um, police funding. So it looks like the Justice and Sister General has combined the two grants that we, uh, traditionally get. That is the policing assisting grant program and, uh, police officer grants. So, um, we're putting in its correspondence, this, uh, agreement has been executed. It is to, to get dollars. It's not to, uh, to get, um, expenses. It's so, uh, we're seeking them to pay us, uh, what we're entitled to through the agreement. So what the agreement reads is that we get a hundred thousand dollars per member, which is we have ten members. Um, so a million dollars plus, um, three hundred three hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six additional. So that, that is the, the funding, um, for this previous for the, for their year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. So I just wanted to, you'd be aware of the granddaughters we get, uh, for RCMP policing.
Yeah, I see what you were scrolling through for the, um, the engagements, uh, February the seventh was the date and for red deer eight thirty to eleven thirty. Would everyone like to, do we register ourselves or?
Yeah, we can certainly help you if you're interested in attending, um, yeah, please reach out to Kara to confirm your availability and we'll get you registered.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you. I think there's one in old as well. Further on, was there an April or? February, okay, February. Okay. Right, could I please have someone make a motion that we accept the correspondence's information?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Highstead. All in favor? So we will start with council reports and today, Counselor Wing is up first.
Thank you, um, Mayor Barkley. Um, I enjoyed very much the opportunity to join my council of colleagues and as well as administration at the twenty twenty-one, um, AUMA Annual Convention last week, uh, we'll refer to it as AM as we move forward. Um, I found it not only informative, but certainly a significant event as far as networking with elected officials from other municipalities as well as provincial government. I was surprised actually at how many provincial, um, provincially elected people were in attendance. So that was good. And certainly lots of good vendors who've got lots of experience working with municipalities. I was also impressed by the numbers, the significance of the newly elected group. There were lots of new counselors representing communities across the province. So that was interesting. And as well as the makeup of the AM membership. So I had somebody actually that works for the provincial government say, oh, I'm surprised that you would go to AUMA. I, you're a rural community. It's like, wow. The summer villages, villages and even Sweetgrass, Montana is a member. So it was just a very interesting group of people. It was large. There were lots of people. So that was interesting. Just quickly, I attended breakout sessions, uh, advocating for small communities in a big world. Setting the table for success, how to start your council's term off right. There was lots of discussion in that session around the code of conduct and the advocacy that's happened to the provincial government around not eliminating it. Um, it seems that the municipalities in this province are very committed to having that, uh, code of conduct. So that was reassuring. And as well, I attended, um, thirteen ways session on how to implement a community-focused strategic plan that I thought was very, um, very timely for us. So found the resolution process to be extremely interested. Gave me some ideas around some future opportunities. So I really enjoyed those through those, that time in Edmonton. Thank you for the opportunity to attend. Um, coming back volunteered at the countdown to Christmas and the Christmas tree lighting. Both events were really well attended. And thanks to Mother Nature for giving us a beautiful evening. That was wonderful. I've had lots of very positive feedback from neighbors and community members about how well organized the event was. So kudos to the folks that were involved there. And people were just really happy to be out with their neighbor. So thank you for that opportunity for the community. Yeah, so that's, that's it for me. Thanks.
Great, thank you, and Councilor Bates.
Wow. I won't try to follow. I, I also spent a good portion of last week at AUMA and it was nice to, to be able to kind of get back. And it's, I would say, compared to normal, it was eighty, eighty-five percent there and it, and so I'm sure next year it'll be a little, a little bit more complete. I also attended the countdown to Christmas and the, which Councilor Wing attended as well, the pre-strat plan meeting that we had and budget this week. That will be quite consuming. Thank you.
Thank you, and Councilor Highstad.
Better get into the game. Actually, how do you compete with Janice Wings? No, I'm just teasing you, Counselor. You know what? What I'm gonna say, my favorite session at AM was the cybersecurity one. I thought it was really cool. I was geeking out on that. I thought it was really neat. They're actually gonna have a program in the new year so that for communities that want to, it's a pilot project. And the gentleman who's this, I think he's the chief financial officer Omar is, is gonna be heading that up. But I think that'd be something cool to look into for our administration on a move-forward basis. There's a lot to learn on cybersecurity. And I just take from what I've learned from my current role is, is how many people are hacking into communities or organizations out there. Christmas tree stuff was awesome and I thought it was great, really well planned out. I, it was cool to see people line up in their cars and get pizza and hang out and then go right to the big tree. And I want to thank our staff for doing that. It was really fun. And I actually had a good time with all of you. Thanks.
Well, that doesn't surprise me, Councilor Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. I also attended the AUMA convention and and I attended three sessions. I tried to get into the new developments in hydrogen. However, that filled up fairly quickly. So I had to go and I attended the building indigenous relations in your community. And we do have, you know, a history of First Nations and Métis in the Innesville area. So when we, when we listen to Chief Ermskin from Masquish, it, a lot of things resonated. So I think there's anything that he had spoke about that we may be able to take a look at here in Innesville down the road. The other addition, session was setting the table for success, how to start your council's term off right, municipal government. And certainly a good refresher for myself. It, a lot of great ideas. It was thirteen ways was there and also the CAO and their consultant that they're using in, in Westlock and they had some really good, no, pardon me, that's the how to implement community-focused strategic plan. But yeah, so those are the two sessions. I, I attended the Christmas tree light up on Friday evening. And again, I'll echo the comments of fellow colleagues that it was well organized. Well put together and many positive comments. And it was great to see, and I'll just throw it out there, sort of like the Christmas tree of fifty-five years ago, when I remember on the corner of Bankers Corner, when we had the horses and the sleigh and the wagon, and we got Japanese oranges and bags of candy. So we're on our way there. So thank you very much. I think that's it. And coming up, we have our budget meeting starting on Wednesday, which will be very interesting discussions over those three days. So, thank you.
Thank you, and Councilor Maseras.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. So the Agenda and Priorities Committee meeting also last, or the Agenda and Priorities meeting last Mon, last Monday. I went to the AMA conference with my colleagues here and saw some, it was extremely educational, not only the educational sessions that we got to sit in, but just being involved and surrounded by everything that happens and seeing kind of the network of how our municipalities run in relation to the province. I thought that was, it was, it was very educational for me. I did go to the session on hydrogen developments and a lot of it was over my head. But there is a good group working on it, the Edmonton Region Hydrogen Hub and their combination of municipal, provincial, federal and indigenous representatives. One thing that I did take away from it is that we have a good supply in Alberta, but we have to work on marketing and promoting the demand side of things. So get, getting there in terms of, of the understanding. A few of the other sessions, the councillors have already talked about, so I won't go into those again. It was awesome seeing our leader of the opposition speak. That was exciting and just being able to watch the questions being asked of the ministers after and watching how they responded to those questions was, was interesting. It was fun coming back after that to go to the Christmas tree lighting and that the previous event to that. And Councilor Wing forgot to mention that it seemed like we were in a Gilmore Girls kind of setting. So that was a lot of fun. I have the policing and safe committees, communities committee meeting tomorrow night and then looking forward to participating in the budget deliberations this week. Thank you.
Thank you, and Councilor Dunham.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. I as well was at AMU, AUMA, rebranded to Alberta municipalities. I also enjoyed myself and I think on several different levels, I enjoyed it. One, just seeing how an association of that size functions comparative to a smaller boards. I really liked the opportunity to listen to Premier Kenny and the opposition leader, Rachel Motley, speak. The question-answer periods and the resolutions, although they were long, I found very interesting on how they functioned. I had the opportunity to attend the hydrogen session and having a better understanding of, you know, a road, the roadmap that they projected for Alberta and the tremendous opportunities that Alberta and our local area has. I also had the opportunity to go to the Economic Development Asset Management Session, which found very interesting, saw some opportunities for some professional development, networking opportunities. Karen and I were able to attend the Solid Waste to Energy. And although I wish I'd had a little bit more information on that one to begin with, I did get something out of it and there are opportunities within that, even though we're a smaller community to partner with our surrounding partners and municipalities. And as well, on Saturday, attended the, or on Friday, attended the light up. Saturday, we had our strat plan session and then Saturday had opportunity to open up the Festival of Trees, which was fantastic too. And yeah, busy week ahead as well. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Dunham. So, yes, of course, I was at Alberta municipalities like the rest of you. With two of the, the sessions I, I went to, my two favorite sessions were the, the hydrogen perspective and the economic development and asset management. I think you could see from the hydrogen presentation, the incredible opportunity that is sitting in front of Alberta right now and, you know, the, the, that Edmonton and area regional hub that they have and the incredible work that they've done, they've, it was very uplifting. And I think like the rest of you, just being around other elected official, officials from across the province. CEOs, et cetera, government people. It was just so inspiring and, and it really makes you I think focus on, on what's important and, and realizing that, you know, with the, that we're, that we're doing the, the right thing as well. And I think the economic development presentation that was given, it, it really supported what we're doing here in Innesville with economic development. It fit perfectly with what we were doing. So I'm looking forward to kind of furthering that in the future. Also came back Friday and we had the countdown to Christmas and the Christmas tree lighting. The community spirit was awesome to see over three hundred people there. So thank you to Director Jenkins and Karen Bradbury and Kane and everybody who worked on that and, and all the volunteers that were involved. It's what made it a, a great success. And then we had strap planning, of course, Saturday morning, as everybody mentioned. So thank you to everybody here who has put in such a Herculean effort the last week doing all of this. And I know many people got back kind of late afternoon Friday and then turned around and came down at four thirty to, to help with the event. And then back here at eight AM on Saturday morning. So congratulations. Tomorrow, I am, afternoon, I have four great six classes that I'm presenting to on municipal governance. So I'm looking forward to that. It's on Zoom, of course. And then we have Budget Wednesday through Friday. Also tomorrow, there's the Alberta Health Services Central Zone Zoom meeting. I think maybe all of you are notified. Tuned in last time, it's excellent information and really good for elected officials to hear as well. And Friday night, there's a women leaders event at the library and Councilor Masera, Swing, myself and the former mayor of Innesville, Pat Newman, have all been asked to speak. So there's approximately one hundred attendees that are coming to it. So really look forward to that. And I know it'll be a, a fun evening with everyone. So I think other than that, I think that's about it on the round table. And is there anyone who is on Zoom that would like to say anything? Please put up your hand if you would, and Carol will unmute you. Nothing? Okay, well, let's move on then to upcoming events. Any questions about any of this? Or pretty straightforward? Sure, many of you are looking forward to your committee meetings and getting going. So it'd be great. Okay, is that all? Okay, I will have somebody please make a motion.
Information?
Sure.
I saw a motion that we accept the report of upcoming events for information.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Harrison. All in favor? Okay, and then the next motion, please, would have somebody make a motion that we move in camera.
I'll move that we move in camera.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Maseras. All in favor? Okay, Carrie, thank you.